I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting on Monday, April 15th, 2019. Clerk Colorado, please.
Mayor Berman?
Here.
Trustee Gaffino?
Here.
Trustee Lowry?
Here.
Trustee Curtis?
Here.
Trustee Carroll?
Here.
Trustee Martinez?
Here.
Trustee Gately?
Here.
Our first item for discussion, Mr. Toth.
Yeah, the first item will actually be the second item on the agenda tonight, which is the Forest Ridge Town Home Concept Plan. Tonight we'll be talking about the 8.63 acres of south of Oak Street, just to the west of the Windstone subdivision. Itself would be an actual continuation of Forest Ridge Drive, connecting with Hearthstone Lane down in Windstone. Right now, we have a concept plan in front of us that shows a total of 32 units, which equates to, given its size, about 3.7 units an acre. At this point in time, we're just looking conceptual. In order to move, advance with this development, we'd have to come back to the plan commission for a full public hearing. The property would be required to be a planned unit development. The village would have to negotiate an annexation agreement. The village would have to approve the annexation of the property, Platts, and so on and so forth. So tonight, we're basically just going to take a look at the 30,000-foot perspective. And conceptually, we want townhomes on this piece of property. More importantly, this property is unincorporated tonight, so adds a little bit of layer of complexity with it through those annexation agreements. But with that, I'm going to go ahead and allow the developers to come up and discuss their plan, and we'll kind of fill in some details afterwards. Everyone should have a copy of the 11-by-17 sheet that printed out for everyone.
And thank you for taking the time on this. My name's Jared Osman. This is Nick Lamagna. We have our engineer here with us as well to answer any questions you might have as well. But we look forward to any questions, and we certainly feel like this fits, from what we understand, anyway, that it fits with what has been recommended for this land and its potential annexation and use. We've tried to fit it in the parameters that we've been guided towards, so we hope we've hit the mark.
So is it, I got a question. How many?
Yeah.
Me first, or somebody else? Yeah, how big are they, the units?
So the idea right now is conceptual. So the idea is to keep them luxury townhomes, anywhere from 2,000 to 3,000, from what our footprint turned out to be, so they could be very large.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That's 32 units, the way they have drawn up now. We don't say, how many are two-bedroom, how many are three-bedroom, or whatever.
Right. The idea for us is to look at markets and see what would be the best we see as a luxury product, to have at least a two-car garage, multiple bedrooms from two to three, I think would make sense, and really kind of scale it that way. We're open to it. We realize we're a little early in the game here. We haven't gone to actual architectural renderings or architectural plans yet, because we don't know, we didn't want to spend the money there if it was something you weren't interested in doing. So we're anxious to do what you want to do.
So is the, is it going to be maintained? Is there like?
Yes, there'll be an HOA. I foresee that, yeah.
So does that include shovel in the snow?
Yes, correct.
Doing landscaping, mowing the lawn?
Yeah, I see. Well, let me have, what do you think?
Probably.
We talked a little bit conceptually. For townhome development, yeah, it makes sense to have that HOA, to have common plantings. Every drive would be a personal drive. We did propose earlier kind of a stacked version where the driveways and doors all faced each other, realized after talking with Michael that that was a bad concept, and we turned it around so they all had private drives, so there's not a parking issue, or realized there's some problems in the village right now with that type of townhome development. So, again, we'd like this to be a luxury feel that blends well with the surrounding neighborhood coming in.
I would agree that it would blend well with the surrounding area there.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd like that to be the case. Have CCNRs on it, and we'd have the right, we'd make sure to regulate how it was built, of course, and the type of materials that are used there.
I have a question to that point. You said this is going to be a luxury townhome product. I would like to see a little bit more brick on the facade.
Absolutely.
And the other thing is, what price point are you looking at?
Again, really depends on the townhome. We want to make sure it fits, so we'll do our market research on that and make sure. It's hard for me to give you an exact number of what it'd look like, but at that price point, if we're 3,000-square-foot luxury townhome with the right kind of exterior features, interior features, that kind of thing, I mean.
Between 2 and 300,000.
Yeah, 2 and 300,000, depending on the size.
Yeah, what will happen through the PUD, if that's something that comes up from the village board, we can actually make that a requirement through the PUD. We also have an annexation agreement, so if that's something that is desirous of the board, we can actually memorialize that in an agreement.
Does this property bust, or go right up to the Woodman's property?
No.
No.
There's a buffer in between there.
30 acres in between there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you look at the screen here, this is the actual easternmost property of the three unincorporated parcels that are located east of Woodman's. So Woodman's would be right here, and this would be the easternmost over here.
What is the comprehensive plan say for?
The comprehensive plan actually calls for townhomes and multifamily development, as you can see here. It actually calls for the continuation of Forest Ridge Drive coming to the south from Waterford Oaks. If you read the narrative, which I included in the staff report, it actually mentions that the actual eastern portion of these properties is for higher, medium-high density residential to support commercial off of Orchard Road. So this is actually in line with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, it makes sense.
How did you get?
My only comment is, I really don't like the straight road going in. Looks kind of like barracks, just from first look at it here, but is there, I know it's kind of a difficult piece, but it looks, wherever the, it was narrow, narrowest piece, I guess, that is left of the three, but is there any way you can do something different than just a straight shot right down the street? Just looks odd.
Yeah, I hear you. I think, you know.
Probably what you can do with the celebrity you have.
It'd be nice to meander it, but the property is so narrow, and the comprehensive plan calls for the road to go all the way through from north to south, so this is really the only way to get it and still have enough room to build on.
One thing we talked about, too, is, so if they come through and we want to basically augment the footprints of the house, so you actually might get a little more variation in the placement of the foundations. Although the street is straight, which it probably should be, we might have a little bit of augmentation in the actual foundation, so it allows for a little more variance throughout the development. There just might be some minor tweaks and some setbacks as we go through that exercise, but because it's a PUD, it allows us design flexibility, which we'll kind of work through. This is something that's desirous for the board.
How would that align with the other piece next to it, then? If that would develop any issues, the way that is now, or?
The bigger piece?
Yeah. I mean, the way this would, just a straight road going in.
And we wish we had the luxury of owning the bigger piece. We're just using what we have currently.
Right, no, I understand. I'm asking, I'm asking staff.
Oh, you're asking staff, okay, got it. I gave my best shot at answering that, I really did.
Yeah, I mean, from our perspective, typically you would have the townhome, and you could see anything going to the west here. You could have multifamily apartments. This is actually a nice transition, because you have Windstone, which is a single-family residence.
Yeah, it's a buffer, I get that part.
Yeah.
How that would line up and match up with additional development to the west.
It kind of sets the tone. We discussed the previous actual layouts, which had the one access drive going to, I think it was eight buildings. So what this does is it kind of sets the tone for that sort of layout moving to the west.
My concern is parking, obviously. What's the width of the street? Is that? Is there going to be parking on the street, Mike?
I know if it would be, in this case, it's standard right-of-way for probably for a minor arterial, so I'm assuming it'd be maybe 30 feet back a curb.
Parking on one side?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be a public road, so it'd be subject to whatever parking we come up with. That can also be discussed through the annexation PUD.
You know the problems we've had with parking in all of our.
Well, that's why we went with that concept, because originally they had the concept that it was more or less like summer wind, where you had the single-access driveway. Actually, they turned the actual units facing west, so that way they'd all have their own private driveways.
Well, it doesn't look like there'd be much room for parking where the driveways come out anyway, so you're going to effectively have it on one side of the street, which will give you more room.
Yeah, wouldn't be much parking on that side, would there?
No.
Going to this concept plan, having a private drive in each one of those garages, and having a two-car garage, we think will mitigate a lot of that for townhouses, to be honest.
How deep are the driveways, standard?
I think, what is it, 30 feet off the?
Right.
And these aren't rental units?
Yeah.
What?
30 feet back off, back of curb into the driveway, and again, two-car garage. And we could widen those driveways, so there's a little room if they wanted to park that way. We're open to concept design. We'll hopefully get that feedback, and we'd be happy to stagger the foundations, to create the variation.
So technically, if they don't use their garage as storage, you put four cars in each unit?
You could, yeah.
I was just going to clarify, it's 30 feet from the right-of-way to the garage, so basically from the sidewalk to the garage, there would be room for two more cars besides the two that are in the garage.
Right, which is typical even for our one, single-family district, this configuration.
Hey, Mike, that property to the east, or west of the thing adjacent to Woodman's, who owns that, and what's the future plans for that parcel?
I don't know. I believe it's in a family trust.
Well, it's owned, yeah, it's owned by the.
Owned by a private individual.
Correct.
Tanner family.
Tanner family owns it.
Oh, okay.
As far as plans go, I've not been approached with anyone.
And that's still, that whole parcel's unincorporated, right?
Correct. Yeah, this whole block here is all unincorporated.
Are there going to be any rental restrictions built into the HOA?
We have not discussed that. It wasn't a plan at this point to restrict it. We've tried to build it as a luxury townhome, which would take a higher rental tenant and client, rather than just an apartment building, so. It's not our plan to rent those, if that's your question. We're not.
Well, no, I know, but some HOAs were built in, like 10 or 20 percent. No more can be rented out at a time.
We haven't discussed it. We're open to it, yeah.
I think it's a nice concept, you know, large townhomes, and I know in the print doesn't look like much, but 30 feet is plenty of room for four cars. You've got three bedrooms, how many more cars can you have? I mean.
Be surprised.
Decent family size there. I like it.
Yeah, very nice. It'll flow waste.
Good there.
Yeah, like I said, the next step would be full public hearing with the plan commission. We would actually have them, they would need to submit architectural renderings, landscape plans, the whole nine, so this is just, again, they've done a great job with preliminary engineering. Typically, we don't get this as part of a concept plan, but I think this is a good basis to work off of. And I do want to make note, too, that there is a cell tower located on the southwest corner of the property. The zoning ordinance requires 150-foot setback from the top of the tower, or actually the height of the tower, so they've also accommodated that on the south side of the property as well.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
All right. Yeah, I mentioned that, yeah, item number one, we leave that for future date. Item number three, Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three is an item that was in front of our operations committee at our last meeting earlier in April. I'm going to briefly introduce Dave Arndt, our IT manager, is here tonight, and he's going to walk us through it. The original plan was that we were going to take this straight to board, but being that this is a significant dollar amount, I wanted to kind of walk the entire board through it first before it got to the village board for a vote. Ultimately, excuse me, our current phone system, internet system, and data all comes from different companies, so to speak. So we contract one company to handle customer service of our actual phone system, and then they also are in charge of a company, they subcontract a company to actually provide the equipment for our phone service. We haven't been very happy with them for the last few years. Their contract's finally up, but I mean, we've had issues. I know there's a few trustees here. One for sure, that has told me that several times they've called in, and I myself have called in and got Aurora Dispatch instead of the Village Hall. It gets rerouted somehow to the city of Aurora's 911 Center. I have no idea why. Dave will go into the issues we've had customer service-wise, but aside from that, we also, I mean, we're working on outdated technology, so Dave's going to go through some of that as well, some speeds. So as we were going through this, we decided that we wanted to, instead of going out for all separate contracts for phones, for internet, for data connections between our buildings, we wanted to create one robust network to connect all of our buildings. And to do so, we would have typically gone through a request for proposals. This time around, instead of going through a formal process, we went through a quote process. And the reason we did that is, there's only three companies that can basically provide the service that we want, and that would be all three of those, data connections to the buildings, internet, and phone service, and that would be AT&amp;T, Comcast, and Metronet. The other thing that's interesting about this, and the reason we went this route, is we were also looking to put money in the budget for new phones, actual physical hardware for everyone's desk and servers to support those phones. I mean, Dave will tell you, conservatively, the phones alone probably were going to be $50,000 to $75,000. So by doing this process and going through these three companies, we were looking for them not only to host the new technology for us, but to also provide the phones as part of that service, which they do. So there you save the upfront capital cost, and it gets rolled into your monthly cost of service to actually have the wireless connections and everything to the buildings. Sorry, not wireless. That being said, we started going through the process, and AT&amp;T did not submit, so we ended up going through Metronet and Comcast. Dave's going to take you through a really good program that's going to show you exactly what we currently have, how much it costs, and what they're offering, and as long as the board is comfortable with it, I will bring it to the next board for a vote to go forward with a contract. So with that being all said, Dave Arndt, our IT manager, is here.
Thank you, Steve. All right, good evening, everybody. All right, so we started a couple months ago on this project, and we selected some individuals from each department. We got together instead of reviewing the phone systems. The internet and the wide-area network connection kind of fell solely on me, which was fine. All right, so basically, the overall goal we set for this project was to improve our communication, the reliability of it, the efficiency of it, and try to move to a single vendor, which then meets both of those goals, and if possible, lower cost, which, you know, with improved technology and getting better service, you know, it was a long shot, but it was worth trying to do. So this project, like Steve said, covers more than just a phone system. It covers our wide-area network, which is the communication between all of our buildings, so that would be the Public Works facility, the two water treatment plants, Village Hall, and the police department. And it also would be our internet connection at those facilities as well. So currently, we use several vendors. We use Comcast for internet at most of our facilities. AT&amp;T provides internet at the Public Works facility. CallOne provides our PRI, which is our phone service, and then we use B&amp;B to provide support for these technologies. And then on top of it, CallOne then resells our service through additional vendors, and I have no method of contacting them, so when we have routing issues, when someone calls in and they get routed to the Aurora Dispatch, I call CallOne. CallOne turns around and calls two to three additional other vendors, who then figure out where the problem lies, and then I never hear back what the actual problem was. And this is pretty routine. This happens, I don't want to totally make numbers up, but I'm guessing once or twice a month at least, minimum for us, that I'm aware of. It may happen more often, and people just don't pass it on to me. So currently, the providers we talked to were Comcast and Metronet. We did reach out to AT&amp;T. They did not get back to us. Other providers I spoke to were not able to give us everything. So they can provide us like a hosted phone system, but they still rely on Metronet or Comcast to provide the internet service, or they can provide us internet service, but in turn, they're really just reselling Comcast or Metronet or somebody else's service on top of it. So we want to eliminate all these middle people, so when we have problems, we know exactly who we need to speak with, and we only have one person to speak with to get these problems resolved. Currently, I'm sorry, so Comcast is able to provide us the WAN, internet fiber and coaxial based, a phone system with the hardware, and then the phone service on top of it. Metronet's able to provide everything the same, with the exception, they only provide fiber optic service. We already went over, all right. So this is our current design and how the village communicates. Primarily, most of our users are in Village Hall and the police department, and we have a dedicated 1.5 megabyte T1 line, which is really outdated and painfully slow technology. AT&amp;T actually doesn't even sell the service anymore. It allows us to limp along, but it's preventing us from doing a lot of disaster recovery preparation, and it causes a lot of problems with moving a lot of data around, big files back and forth. And then our outlying facilities all use the public internet to connect in through VPN, which works pretty well, with the exception of Public Works, and that came down to having two different service providers trying to send our encrypted traffic back and forth. And now to this point where the only way I can get Public Works to connect in is through a Band-Aid fix, which works, but as John can attest, is not exactly pleasant while he's out there trying to do his job.
There are literally days that John doesn't get emails.
So when Comcast gave me their proposal, they're providing, it's a true private WAN connection for us. So all three of our major facilities, which would be Village Hall, Police Department, and Public Works, will have a private connection. Village Hall and the police department would actually be on a fiber connection, and Public Works would still have a coaxial connection, which would be sufficient, because we don't have a minimal amount of users out at the Public Works facility. The two water treatment plants would still rely on doing the VPN connection. We tend to have maybe one user out there at a time, not very often, so these connections are adequate. We don't nearly need something elaborate out there. So the one thing that Comcast presented was a single internet connection out at the police department, and it was dedicated fiber, and it's very fast, but in the event that that goes down, basically the entire village would not have internet access, which made me slightly concerned. When Metronet came in, they basically presented the exact same solution. The one thing they did give us was 100-meg connection between the two buildings, between Village Hall and the police department, versus Comcast, who only gave us a 20-meg connection. Metronet, they gave us 10-meg connections for Public Works, which was a little bit less than what Comcast had presented at 20 mags between Village Hall and Public Works. But with the fact we have two users, maybe three to four coming up, this connection would be more than adequate. Once again, the treatment plants would still be on the public internet and using a VPN connection back in. We do get the redundant internet, and the nice thing with the river between us, there's actually two legs of fiber, one running down 25, and one running down 31. In the event that there's damage on one of those fiber lines, the internet should still be up at the other facilities, and it's possible that the WAN connection that we have between our buildings would allow the police department's traffic to route over to Village Hall for the internet and vice versa. So if our internet went out at Village Hall, we could route over the WAN to the police department and use our internet as a redundant connection. The nice thing about fiber optic is it's not susceptible to weather, trees, car accidents, hitting telephone poles, things like that. Generally, the only thing that takes off fiber optic cable is a contractor with a backhoe or something along that lines. So in addition to the internet and the WAN, both presented us a phone system. They're both very comparable. It's a hosted system to where we have the actual phone sitting on our desk, and the servers, the voicemail server and everything to manage the phone is in the cloud on Comcast or Metronet's servers. It's a desirable solution for us. It eliminates hardware in-house, and eliminates having to take care of that hardware, back up that hardware, supply power, keep it cool, all the things that go with having that. Plus, every time there's upgrades or changes, they do it without us even knowing, and it's done, and we keep getting the greatest and greatest with minimal effort on our part. Both vendors have very similar service level agreements, guaranteeing their reliability, the quality of their service, and how quickly they can repair our service. And being we're entering these type of agreements on a business plan, we get sort of like first seat when it comes to repairs if there's an outage. Both vendors agree to port all of our existing phone numbers, so the village won't lose any phone numbers we have. They both have full warranty on all of their phone hardware, and they both will provide new phones on every desk for free. We get new phones every five years from them. If a phone fails, they just drop one off at us. It's a win-win for us in the fact that we're getting a brand-new phone system, and we're really not paying for the hardware. So during the proposal part, the village staff looked over both proposals that each vendor presented us, and looked at all the highlight parts that they had, summed them up, and added additional features that we saw as desirable or necessary for us. It created a 38-point scale that we could rate them on. Metronet scored 32 out of the possible 38 points, and Comcast received 30 out of the possible 38 points. So, I mean, they're really neck-and-neck along the lines. Where things started to change was when you started looking at what service was being provided.
Excuse me, Dave, would you repeat that?
Yes, sir. In regards to what, I'm sorry.
Just what you just said. I didn't catch that last phrase.
Okay. So where it changed was the service that was actually being provided. So though they're providing relatively equal services, far as what they're giving us, Metronet, everything's coming in on fiber optic cable. That's the only thing they install. Comcast was doing sort of a mix of fiber optic and coaxial, which is like your standard copper cable that's coming into your house. So the coax would be out of Public Works and the two water treatment plants still. So being that Metronet was installing fiber for us for free everywhere, it just kind of gave them a leg up on some things. And then additionally, Metronet had provided much faster service and speeds, which is sort of their base packages, was faster than Comcast higher-end packages. When it comes down to cost, currently, the village is paying roughly $3,685 every month, and it fluctuates based on long distance. Metronet came in at roughly $4,023, and Comcast came in at $3,737. These prices wouldn't fluctuate much, because everything's included, so once we nail down the price, it'll be easy to help Mr. Hannah out with budgeting, because it's never going to fluctuate moving forward.
Dave, if you, while you're looking at that, so just want to point this out again. You see, the numbers aren't that different monthly than what we currently pay, considering the technology is significantly better. But the other thing I keep on our mind is, and if you look in Dave's memo, just for the hardware, the desks, the phone system, we're also saving, that number doesn't include the fact that we're saving $70,000 to $100,000 in hardware that we would buy pretty much every 10 years. So that was a capital expense that would have been in the budget, that we didn't put in the budget, so technically, by going to this type of service through Metronet or Comcast, we've eliminated a capital expense of $70,000 to $100,000 as well.
Do we get a five-year contract? Is that what this is?
That's why we have the five-year price up, yes. It would be a five-year contract. That's their way, I think, to make their money back on the phone system itself.
Right, because they are incurring capital costs by installing some of these services for us, by running the cables to our buildings, upgrading the cables, upgrading the hardware within our buildings, so they do incur capital costs, and to recover some of that, you know, they do have to charge us a little bit of money on that.
Is that the minimum, the five years?
You know what? I can reach out to them and confirm if we could do a three-year contract. I don't think they do anything less than a three-year, though. All right. Yes, sir.
They said they were going to, they're going to bury the, Metronet's going to bury their fiber optic?
Yeah, all their cables are buried underground.
What do they have, not in my neighborhood.
Our neighborhood.
What do they have going across the river now, anything?
I'm sorry?
What do they have going across the river now, anything, or?
What does Metronet have going across the river? I believe they have it running up further, closer to Indian Trails, where they have their fiber crossing the river. I can confirm that with their engineers, if you'd like. Yes, there's two feeds coming in, so they have a leg running down 25 and another leg running down 31, and they both run off to separate head ends as well. All right, so in summary, both vendors presented packages that met our requirements. Overall, staff feels that Metronet's proposal would better meet our needs, especially when we're looking future and trying to future-proof. They did score higher on the rating system. Their phone system had more features that were desired by the staff. Their phone system was a lot more simple to use, and much closer to our current system, which would make an easier transition for our staff. They did propose faster internet and primary WAN at our primary locations. They only installed the fiber optic cable. They did include the redundant internet connection. They did include the redundant internet connection. And one thing that they offer that Comcast not was they will install cable and phone anywhere we want one in the building. So if we don't have a phone in a closet or down in some other part of the building, they will run the cable out and put the phone there for us. With Comcast, we'd have to hire a contractor and have them do that cabling for us. So it's an additional savings on top of this. Now Comcast did meet our needs and they were less expensive. Comcast did propose a faster WAN connection between our secondary locations and, you know, Comcast is a pretty well-established company in the area. With that being said, Metronet is new to our area, but they have been in business and they've been operating out of Indiana for a very long time. I did reach out to references and received nothing but really great reviews about their technology, their support and how well their staff helped them implement their project once they started moving forward on it. A side note, Comcast did contact me after the operations committee meeting and at their own discretion, they did propose new numbers for the internet and WAN speeds. They lowered their prices and they agreed to put fiber at all our locations. I did do a comparison of the new proposals that Comcast gave us and trying to directly compare them with what Metronet had already presented speed-wise. Comcast would come up at $280 less than Metronet. However, staff did not reach out to Metronet to try to get an additional proposal from them. I didn't feel it was right to have numbers come across and then have someone come back and try to beat their bid and then have me basically take their bid over to another guy and have them try to beat it. And then it's just back and forth and I felt when we started this project, I expected them to give me their best proposal, what was to be the best fit for us. And it's a, that they didn't do that, it didn't make me want to bend over backwards to try to help them out if they didn't want to give us the numbers upfront.
Specifically, they reached out to us when we were putting the package together Thursday, so we didn't have much time to, we sat down as a group and kind of talked it over. The numbers were out there publicly already and all of a sudden they came back, "Oh, we can put this in, we can do this." We didn't know this was important to you. So we haven't reached out to Metronet, we never went back. The problem with not being a formal process is had this been a formal RFP or a bid, we wouldn't have usurped the process. You would have gone out, got in everyone's proposals and gone through them, brought them to the board publicly. Once they get publicly, it gives the opportunity for businesses to try to undercut each other. So to Dave's point, we haven't gone back to Metronet, we never asked them to necessarily lower their price as well. But I think it is important that even if Comcast, and I don't know what the new numbers, it's a couple thousand dollars less a year.
It actually came out to being basically $5 less than what they previously quoted us, but they did increase their speeds.
So with that being said, the other thing that we should note is Dave said the phone system itself, aside from being simpler, the hardware is much better with Metronet. It's a much better company that provides that. Not Metronet, the actual hardware is provided by Cisco. He claims that that is a very good brand of phone system, doesn't break very often, easy to fix, works well compared to the other system Comcast is offering.
More importantly, when somebody calls here, they're not going to get dispatch, right?
That is the intended goal, yes.
Okay. So ultimately, that's where we're at. We wanted, we thought it was good for your knowledge to know that Comcast did come in at the last second and try to, you know, give a better offer, so to speak. But we want to keep this process moving. We've been doing this for a long time. We've waited for our contracts to end and we're out of contract technically, I believe, on the phone system right now.
That is correct.
So we'd like to get this process implemented before we start paying higher rates. So we want to bring this to the board, but I felt since this wasn't a formal process, and this was really complicated when I first got here and we had all these mixed contracts and I think Dave, because he really took them all over and we've got it to a point where we can consolidate with the company. And the thing I think is most important is no matter whether it's Comcast or Metronet is that the cost isn't that much more per month than what we currently pay for horribly outdated technology and really bad service.
When we were at the operations committee, I'm pretty, I'm in favor of Metronet, but I don't really, since this wasn't a formal process, if we were in the private sector and somebody came back with a better bid, you would take that to the other bidder. I don't see a problem going back to Metronet and saying, "This is where their price is. Can you come down $200 a month?" And, I mean, since it wasn't, Comcast opened that door. And we're not doing it on our own volition. Comcast opened the door to that, so I think it's only fair that we approach Metronet and say, "Can you match their price?"
I agree.
Yeah. And like I said, that's why we wanted to bring it up to the board. We wanted, we were not sure, I'll be 100% honest with you, I thought this might come up and it would open us the door to go back to Metronet at this point, but I wanted to make sure that the board knew about that and that was comfortable with the board to do that. And if so, I don't want it to linger, though, that's the thing. And at the end of the day, I will be 100% honest, we'll probably still pick Metronet if, even if Metronet comes down a little bit, let's say they come down a little bit, but they're more expensive. Ultimately, the staff's going to recommend if they're close, the better solution to the village. And the village doesn't have to take that, the board can say, "No, we'd rather go with the other." But at this point, we'll see what we can do with Metronet if that's what the board wants. We'll go back, see if they can lower their price at all. But ultimately, what we'll do is we'll still provide you the staff recommendation for which contract to go with.
You know, I'd like to support Trustees Carroll's comment that I also prefer Metronet versus the other company, quite clearly, in fact. So just, I want to go on record as saying that I'd support the decision if you went with Metronet, I'd support that despite the slight extra cost. So thank you.
Well, we'll see, because maybe that cost, if Metronet comes down, doesn't come down, maybe it is too much of a gap and the village board chooses to go Comcast. We'll figure it out, we'll go to Metronet and we'll do the best we can at this point and we'll bring it back to the village board.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Super.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dave.
Is that all we got?
Budget.
Oh, item number four.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to item number four, just very quickly, I don't know if the board knew, the reason we went to item number two and not item number one is the petitioner chose not to move forward at this time. They're still doing some more research. They decided to kind of put their special use request on hold. So that just came up today. So they just reached out to Mike and said, "Hey, we're not 100% ready to keep moving forward at this time, we're still evaluating some stuff." And Mike said, "No problem, we'll just let the board know and we'll discuss it if, whatever they come back with."
So item number four, budget discussion, Mr. Hannah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the, sort of the last discussion on the draft budget. The only change that we have to the draft budget so far, from what was presented to the board back in March, was an adjustment for the funds allocated towards Riverfront Park, based on some revised estimates and scope of work. That is now $375,000 instead of $250,000. Other than that, we have no changes to the draft budget so far. The only other item we wanted to go through with the board really quick, unless there's other questions unrelated to this, one of the sections of the budget that didn't get completed prior to the draft budget being done was the section on long-term capital projects. This section includes additional information on capital projects that are already budgeted in the draft budget, there's just a little more information on them, but also includes what are possibly some longer-term projects that have been under various stages of discussion. So I'm just going to walk through these really quick and if there's any questions, boards, please ask away. The first one is our annual long-term road program. This was pegged in the draft budget for $1.9 million, including several streets west of Randall and east of 25. It was 1.9 million estimate, came in about 1.87 million, so that turned out to be a pretty accurate number. Going forward, we're not sure, the amount that we spend on the annual road program's going to vary based on scope of streets, other capital projects that are necessary, but we would anticipate at least on average about 1.8 million would need to be spent by the village. Next is the central water tower. We anticipate this project starting this upcoming fiscal year. This is being funded partially with water bonds that were issued two years ago. We anticipate construction costs around $2 million and we hope to get that project done this upcoming fiscal year. We have two wells being built under construction right now. The first one is well eight over on Randall Road. And the well has been drilled and transmission main is being, going to be construction soon. The anticipated cost for next year of 1.2 million include the construction of the well house, pumps, electrical components and other aspects in order to put that well into service. So we anticipate well eight being completed with the upcoming budget in the upcoming fiscal year. The exact same story for well nine located over on Feltes Lane. Again, looking to spend, spend the remaining bond proceeds that we borrowed of $1.2 million to construct the house, electrical and pumps for that project. Board is aware of LED street lighting program. This is upcoming, the third year of that program to convert streetlights to LED and also to analyze the condition of street poles and replace ones that are beginning to fail or look like they could be a possible safety issue. This upcoming fiscal year, we have $125,000 budgeted for LED light replacement and $80,000 for pole replacement. There are a couple additional areas that are under investigation by the village in terms of trying to look at the poles to see if they're in good condition. So while we don't have any additional monies allocated in future years, it's something that we've been talking about over the last two weeks. We also budget money for annually for water main projects. Typically in the past, this has been prior to reconstruction of a road, but there's also been times where it's been specific projects, specific water main replacement projects that aren't related at all to the reconstruction of a certain street segment. So on average, that's been about $300,000 a year. And while we don't have anything budgeted for this year, it is something that we look at annually. One specific area includes Route 31 water main replacement. We identified an area south on Route 31 for replacement of the water main. It's something that is planned for a future year when scheduling and some of the analysis of how that project would go gets analyzed. But that specific segment of Route 31 water main, we anticipated being about a $1.2 million project installed from I-88 north to State Route 56, which is the entire Route 31. This would be on the southern portion of that. Another project that was been under discussion was the removal of the Fox River Dam. This was to be done in conjunction with the Fox Valley Park District and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources. There's going to be an intergovernmental agreement and a state grant between the three agencies to get that project done. That is not currently an active project at this time. I think there are some agreements that would need to be re-upped and re-looked into, but that was estimated to be about a $3 million project in total, once it was estimated that it might get done.
That wasn't a cost to us, right? That was...
No.
Correct. I believe the cost to us might have been just the engineering and the construction, the removal of the dam would have been state cost.
We had some nominal engineering that we were, basically we were going to pay our engineer, if I remember correctly, just to oversee the project, but it was $500,000 of it was for construction engineering and that was paid for by the state and then 2.5 million was for demolition and that was also paid for by the state.
Okay. The renovation and lighting of the silo, another project that we've talked about recently, again budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year, as previously discussed, construction cost $320,000, which includes about $20,000 engineering.
That is because our project is estimated to be just under $300,000. Staff put money in for engineering. We're talking about whether or not we might hire a construction manager, we haven't decided yet, for a few thousand dollars to kind of oversee that project as opposed to just letting a general contractor give us updates. We might want somebody there actually overseeing their work. We haven't decided that yet.
Riverfront Park also in the budget for next year. As I mentioned, there was an adjustment to the allocation for next fiscal year. There are several possible future components to this project besides the plaza and parking lot updates for $375,000 for next year. Those have been discussed internally by staff and there's a lot of factors that go into analyzing some of those phases and that's something that will continue to be discussed going forward.
As of right now, they, once the plaza is built, we don't have another Riverfront project on the horizon right away, but we are working with NORDA on potential grants in the future. So if you see in future years, we anticipate next year putting money in the budget. So this upcoming year, we build our project, actually the money gets rolled in because it was supposed to be done this year. It'll get rolled over to the next fiscal year, starting June 1. Then the following year, 2021, we'll be looking to actually put some money in for engineering and that is to design a concept for a future phase of the park and then use that concept potentially to try to get grant money, which is why you see money in three years from
One item that's, was, new item that's been discussed recently was geometric improvements to the intersection of Route 31 Airport Road. There's some really tight turn radiuses for vehicles and trucks in that intersection. This would be something that the village would need to work with the state on, but there was an estimate done a couple of years ago on that project and it came back that the estimated cost would be approximately $530,000, including intersection improvements and traffic signal improvements that would be necessary for that intersection. Another new item that was discussed during the budget process, as the board recalls, we did begin the process of replacing backyard water mains with, partially funded with a CDBG grant a few years ago. There are other blocks between Cherry Tree and Willow Way that are also backyard water mains. Staff started discussing possible timeline and how that process and project would go to install a new water main in the right of way and abandon the backyard water mains. There's a couple different ways the village might phase it, all at once, two years, three years. The estimated cost right now for that project is about 2.2 million and it's something that's under discussion right now for potentially in a future year.
Once again, when we do a big project like this, it's a placeholder, if you will, to just let the board know that this is a major project on the horizon, doesn't mean we're going to do it next year or four or five years from now. It just means that it's on the horizon and we know it's going to have to happen eventually.
And that's it. So if there's any other questions on these items or anything else in the draft budget, I'd be happy to hear them.
No. Very nice. Particularly like the silo project.
That's it, huh? All right. Like a motion to adjourn to executive session to approve or discuss property acquisitions.
Motion to move to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session and we won't be coming back.